Okay, if I can have everyone's attention, please. At this time, I'd like to call the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for February 27, 2018 to order. This time, if you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you continue standing for a moment of silence, please. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Morse?
I'd like to make an addition, please.
Yes.
I'd like to discuss the unexpired vacant town council seat.
Under a discussion item?
Yes, sir.
I have one. Under new business on B, council member Kiesler's resignation acceptance.
Patrick, everything else satisfactory?
One last item, Mr. Mayor. The first bullet item under project.
Yes.
If we could take that one out, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would be economic development?
Yes, sir.
Any other additions or deletions? No, at this time, I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
Show move.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion, all in favor. That would be unanimous. Up first is a presentation. Is Michelle Reese here? Oh, there you are. Okay, if you can come up. Yes, I would need you to take the podium to give the 30-second explanation. You're the one that brought this to council, please.
We have a resident at my place of employment, Carolinas Assisted Living, Ms. Jo is what we call her. I can't really say her full Italian name, but on March the 10th, she's going to be 100 years old, and we're going to have a celebration. So, on behalf of Ms. Jo and her family, and Carolinas Assisted Living, and everybody who knows her, thank you so much for this.
Okay. At this time, we're going to read a happy birthday proclamation for her 100th birthday for you to take over to her. That's quite a milestone. So, whereas Mrs. Pantaleo, one of four children, was born March 10th, 1918, to Italian immigrants, Mr. and Mrs. Gesimondo. And whereas Ms. Pantaleo was married on August 18th, 1940, to Joseph Pantaleo, and lived a wonderful life with him until his death in August of 2000. And whereas Mrs. Pantaleo raised a daughter, Joanne, and son, Joseph, who later blessed them, with a total of four grandchildren and three great-grandchildren in both New Jersey and North Carolina. And whereas Ms. Pantaleo was skilled, was a skilled crochet beater, adding sequins to designer gowns and various garments in the 1930s, including those of Mae West. And whereas Ms. Pantaleo is a resident of Carillion Assisted Living in Indian Trail, North Carolina, and is a joy to be around. And whereas Ms. Pantaleo will be celebrating her 100th birthday on March 10th, 2018. Now, therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the town of Indian Trail, do hereby proclaim March 10th, 2018, as Mrs. Agrippina Pantaleo Day, and wish her a very happy 100th birthday. If you would, pass along our birthday wishes.
Thank you very much.
And if you would, if you can. May this be the beginning of a great tradition here of celebrating our residents that reach such a milestone.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment. I know that we're celebrating that 100. I'd just like to thank Michelle for bringing that in. And if you don't know Michelle, she's one citizen of the quarter. And just a couple of quick things. Michelle works at this assisted living where this fine lady is turning 100 years old, and she volunteers a lot of her time there, just out of the goodness of her heart. And she brings some pizzas and biscuits. And on Saturday, when all the, we had all that cold weather, the pipes broke there, and they had to move a lot of residents out of the one end of the buildings to the other. And Michelle, on her Saturday, goes down and helps move all these people, and out of the goodness of her heart. And I know this isn't about you, Michelle, but I thank you for all your, the things that you do. You're a great citizen, and I know the town appreciates you a lot. So, thank you too. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, David. Okay, at this time, I'll open to public comments. Please be reminded, the speaker has three minutes. Please state your name when you approach the podium, and your three minutes will begin. Is it Billy Klingon? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, my message is for all of us here, distinguished guests, as well as all of you. The name of my topic that I am very concerned about tonight is make, help make North Carolina beautiful again. For a long time, I believed that I was the only person who was disgusted about the litter problem in our county and on our roads and highways. However, I found out that many people are fed up with our litter problem. I have lived in eight different states and now North Carolina. This is a beautiful state with friendly people and a lot to do. However, North Carolina is being greatly scarred with roadside litter. I must be honest in saying this. Of all the places that I have lived in this country, this area of North Carolina is the most littered place that we have ever lived. I have never seen so much trash and litter on the sides of our roads and highways as I have seen here. A North Carolina native told me, "That's just the way it is around here, so get used to it." During the holidays, we had visitors from out of state who stated that we should rename our town Litterville. To be told that I need to get used to the litter because that's the way it is, and we need to rename our town to Litterville, should be an embarrassment to all of us. I had a discussion about our litter problem with a friend who has been living in North Carolina for several years. He said, and I quote, "We do not have a litter problem," unquote. I took him for a ride to show him the litter. He said, and I quote, "I have been living here for so long that evidently I have become so used to the litter that I don't even see it. I see it now. We definitely have a litter problem." Have we become so used to the litter that either it does not concern us, or we just don't see it? I have five questions. Why do so many people here litter? Number two, what gives them the right to throw out their fast-food containers, bags of garbage, even mattresses, rugs, carpet, broken-down furniture on the sides of the roads and highways? Is it, or is it not, against the law to litter in Indian Trail, Union County, or the state of New York? If it is against the law, why do we not have do-not-litter signs on our roads, or unlawful do-litter signs indicating fines for breaking the law? And can anyone please tell me why we do not have laws requiring trucks that haul debris or trash to put a cover over the debris to keep it from flying out onto our roads and highways? Please join me in contacting local and state politicians about our litter epidemic and demand that something be done about it. Please join me in contacting local fast-food restaurants and even their headquarters to in some way, inform, and educate their customers not to litter with their fast-food containers. The biggest source of advertising fast food is fast-food bags, boxes, and cups on the sides of our roads. Please join me in contacting the education department and schools to start teaching people about the harm of litter. Please join me in contacting law enforcement people to take a stronger charge.
Three minutes.
Okay.
That's it.
To take a stronger charge against litterers. For a long time, excuse me, in the meantime?
We have to.
Okay.
It's three minutes.
We need your help. We have a litter problem. All of us have a litter problem. We must do something. We must come together. I got to start somewhere, so I started here.
Thank you.
And we need your help. Thank you.
Real quick. Chase, is it the Sheriff's Department you get those reflective if somebody wants to clean up litter?
We don't give our best.
That's not that?
Yeah. But you can call 911, and we'll go out and mop people up and charge them with litter. And then with the ones we see, we lock up and charge them. But if you got dumping, you should definitely call us.
Gordon Daniels.
Yes, Gordon Daniels, 1020 Woodcreek Lane. Good evening, Mayor and distinguished counsel. My office is a mess at home. My wife's always saying I have to clean it out. So, the other day, I went and took the task of cleaning out my office, and I came across some notes. And one of the notes went back to like 2015. And it had to do with the budget process. And at that time, I think I was still kind of new on the council, feeling my way around. And, but I wanted to share something with the new council members. At that time, we were looking to finance this building. And some statements were made by some senior council members that kind of concerned me even more so, as I read it today, than it did at the time they made those statements. And they said that we're going to have to raise taxes to finance this building. And that's really not true, because the process means that we have a reserve fund for our debt. To, otherwise, we have a penny put aside that will give us about $336,000 a year that will pay all our bills each month for that particular year. So, for that council member, at that time, I said it was a senior council member to make that statement, kind of told me they didn't realize the process. And I wanted to share with the incoming council members, since we're coming into council, since we're coming into the budget time, that any taxes that will be raised should be taxes raised for new debt, not for existing debt, including this building. Funds to set aside each year, including this building, for design changes and other cost overruns on this building, and for all the debt. So, going forward, when you guys are looking at the budget, and you say we have to raise taxes, hey, that's fine. Just give your reason why, but don't say we're raising taxes for this building, because that would be unethical. Thank you very much.
Forgive me if I pronounce this incorrectly. Susan Zarco. Did I get that correct?
Yes, you did, sir. Let me put this down. Hi, my name is Susanna Zarco, and I'm here to express also my concern about the state of our roads. And I'm not just here to ask you to clean our roads, because that would be like fixing a boat, and the hole is there, and you keep fixing it, and nothing happens. What I'm here is, we need to have a program. A program that will educate our citizens. And we have a lot of ideas. It's not that we're just coming in here, but because of the sake of time, we are not able to share all of them with you. But I just wanted to let you know that I have encountered so many people that are just infuriated by the state of our roads. And one of the things that we need, I see a run is our signs that said, "Indian Trail, a place to live, to work, to learn, and to play." And I like that. And we're also known as the it-town. So, I want us to be the it-town that stands, that starts a cleaning revolution that will go to Indian Trail, Union County, and the rest of North Carolina. Now, we are a few of us, and I cannot reach all the city councils, I cannot reach all the congressmen and senators, but with your help, and we're just starting with a simple step, maybe a community cleanup, a well-organized, well-advertised cleanup, to show that we are proud of our town, of our roads, and that people know it's wrong to throw trash in the roads, but they have this attitude. Nobody's saying anything, nobody's seeing me, so I'll just do it. I just don't want that to keep happening on this place. And to share my frustration, I have here other 60 comments from our neighbors, from our community, and I had to close that discussion on next door, otherwise, this will have gone forever. But we have ideas, so please talk to us. Let's be the it-city where trash stops in here. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Cross.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Cross. I live at 3009 Corona Lane in the beautiful community of Brandon Oaks. First off, I want to start off by saying it's a shame that Monty had resigned so early. I'll keep his family and him in armor prayers. I know he put a lot of work into the campaign in the last election, was out there, canvassed across town, talked to a lot of voters. It's a shame he had resigned so early. Now, there's an open seat on the town council. I think so soon after the election, I think the voters deserve for the replacement to be selected from the pool of candidates who ran last November. There were a number of qualified candidates who went out there, campaigned, talked to voters, put a lot of time and effort into the campaign season. I think the voters who went out there and voted in the two weeks going up to and on Election Day deserve someone who they chose to fill the open seat. I got 759 votes in November. Amanda Falkenberry got 631. Marcus McIntyre got 519. All qualified candidates who put the legwork in last November. I know it's a tough decision that sits with the council to go ahead and fill that seat. It's your decision to make and yours alone, but I think we owe it to the voters to consider their voice last November when selecting that seat. I think it'd be good for the voters, for our town, for our overall state of democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Ryan DePray.
Hi, I'm Ryan DePray, Saratoga Boulevard. I just wanted to come here as a resident and express to you also, very similar to what Brian was saying, I feel that the open seat has became open very close to the election. And as a resident, I just wanted to express and have my voice heard that I'd like to see our next councilman come from the persons who ran this recent election. I feel that would be most appropriate. I know that's not the official rule, but I do know that that's something that you, as the council, will decide, I believe. But again, I just wanted to voice that to my council, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll close the public comments and invite Captain Cobble to the podium for the law enforcement update. Evening, Captain.
This is going to be really brief, I promise. I say that every time. So, I passed out up there at the dais earlier, a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. One of them is a copy of a news release that was done on our Facebook page. And if nobody in the room, if there's anybody in the room that doesn't follow our Facebook page, go on to Union County Sheriff's Office or the Indian Trail Bureau of Union County Sheriff's Office. And we push out a lot of information, road closures and other things on there on Facebook. So, I'm sure everybody in the room knows what Facebook is. And I don't tweet yet, but we've got a Twitter account, so we've got somebody that does that kind of stuff for us, too. But we had a gentleman in Kansas that our detective was tied back to a child solicitation case here in Indian Trail that is pretty noteworthy. Back in November of 2017, we got a call for service at a home here in Indian Trail where they said that their teenage daughter had run away from home. And as the deputies were getting in that neighborhood, the parents located the child. And so, everybody got reconvened back at the house, got to talking, figured out that the minor had been using Snapchat, communicating with a gentleman. So, after a review of the phone and doing a forensic analysis of it, it was determined that there was a lot of communication between that teenage female and Mr. Sims. So, we worked hard to identify Mr. Sims, who was a resident of Kansas, and finally figured out that he had been soliciting her to run away and come out there where he was at and become a prostitute so that she could bring in money to help fund them living together out in Kansas. So, some of our detectives traveled to Kansas and knocked on his door with a search warrant along with Homeland Security and ICE, the Immigrations Customs Enforcement Division that handles the child sex trafficking portion from their organization. And long and short, he's residing in a Kansas jail right now, waiting on extradition back to Union County. But it was well worth it that we sent our guys out there to put closure on this case. It's interesting to hear some of the statements that he was making and the admissions that he was making to the investigators out there while they were interviewing him, but he had no bones about that that's what his intent was. And a lot of the documents and other computers and stuff out there that they seized have already yielded several other names on that. So, it's a scary world that we live in. So, I say that all to say, you got to be very mindful on what your children are doing online and what your children are doing on their phones and on their iPods. So, you know, I'm in the same boat with you. I got a 10-year-old at home that's got a phone now that the YouTube videos are popping up on and everything else. So, well, you have to take your due diligence and go in there and see what they're looking at and watching them, pay attention to them. So, this past Sunday night, a blackmail subject approached the firehouse sub's manager as she left the store and locked the door. He raised up his arm that was wrapped in a white cloth and pointed something at her and demanded that she open the door back up and go back inside in an attempt to rob her. She decided she wasn't going to be robbed that night, and so she in turn hit her panic button on her car and went screaming and hollering and took off running. And it scared him, and he took off running. Now, I wouldn't advise that that be the course of action that everybody take. I'd just say that you got to do what your gut feeling tells you to do at the time. But it worked for her, and he ran off. A K-9 track was run in that area, and you know, we had a little bit of delay in getting it reported to us. She called and reported it to somebody else, and then she called her boss, who finally said, "Well, you got to call 911." So, my public service announcement on that is, if something like that happens to you, call 911. We'll call your boss with you later on and let them know about it, but time of the urgency. So, they are running down some leads and working on that. The last thing I've got tonight is standing at the back door. They're twins, in case anybody's wondering. But at the previous council meeting, council was generous enough to follow through what we had talked about in the prior year's budget meeting, and we did a reclassification of two of our positions here in Indian Trail, which in turn took two deputy positions and adjusted those up to two sergeant positions. So, we were lucky in that Sheriff Kathy agreed that two of our guys that have been serving up here for a while now were promoted. James Galvin in uniform back here, James is on his 22nd year with the Sheriff's Office, and 13 of those years were spent working narcotics. Four years of that 13 is four, right? Four and a half. Four and a half years spent working narcotics as a task force officer out of Charlotte, working this whole region on the federal task force. So, James brings a world of information and a world of knowledge to us. I don't know what Josh brings, but Josh has been here, serving in Indian Trail for a long time now. He's been an employee for nine years with the Sheriff's Office, does a tremendous job. Both of these gentlemen are a great asset to us, a great asset to the town, and I'm glad that we were able to keep them up here. So, it's a pretty tight process, and Patrick came down for the promotions that we did. But we actually go through an assessment. These guys have to go through an assessment process with our office, and we have outside people that come in from Kannapolis PD, CNPD, Gaston PD, Monroe, you know, all kinds of places from around here. They don't know they're assessors, but these are captains and sergeants and lieutenants from other areas, and we don't sit in on those. So, as much as I like them, and I might want to score them up a little bit on something compared to another guy, they don't get the benefit of having me or one of their friends review and evaluate them. They have to impress other law enforcement officers from around this region that are in the, you know, same roles that they're trying to get into. So, they score well on that, and then they get put onto a list. So, there's an opportunity that if a promotion came available somewhere else within the county, that one of these two guys could have gotten picked for that. So, we were lucky that we were able to keep them here, because I think you want them here. So, I just wanted to congratulate them in front of you guys. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chase. Congratulations. Thank you, Captain. That brings us to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Show move.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion to approve, all in favor?
Right.
That would be unanimous. There's no public hearings. That brings us to old business. The Beacon Hill Storm Water Study Results, recommended option. Mr. Sedik, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time we met, we promised to come back with a recommended option. And, do you want to show that on the screen? This option, staff came up with this option, is different than the ones that consultant came up with, but we shared our info with the consultant. He's in concurrence that it could work. So, simply, there is an empty lot down there that could be taken and made a detention pond, and that approximately will lower the flood approximately about a foot as of now. They're going to run another model. But simply, this is much less, it has much less impact than the other five options that we shared with you last time. And the construction cost for that option, removing the dirt, relocating the sewer, and not including the purchase of the property, because that has to be through an eminent domain process. But it's approximately, to do the work itself, it's about $170,000, not including the price of the property. So, what we're asking council tonight is to vote and allow on us to proceed with this project. Any questions?
Do you need the photos?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Do you need the photos?
Uh, no.
You don't need them?
No need to.
Can you speak into the mic so everyone can hear you? Thank you. Good. Mr. Cohen.
I noticed there's a open lot there where the construction cost is going to go. Was there ever a house there?
Yes.
And did the house get flooded? Is that what happened? I mean, why is there not a house there is what I'm curious of now. There was one there at one time.
David, I'm not pretty sure. I don't have any history about the house, but that lot itself does flood. And rather than go in and impact two properties, that one and the one behind it, and have a bench, as the consultant called it, the best thing to do is just have one lot impacted that could give us the capacity to lower that flooding about a foot. So, that is part of that flooding area right there. But I'm not sure if there was a house there or not. Maybe Mrs. Howe could answer that question.
Well, let me continue that question. Is that, is that the, I don't see the creek there. Is, that's it right there? You can't see it?
Yes, sir. The creek runs parallel to that line right there, David.
Well, I know exactly where it is now.
Right.
The lady that lives in the house right beside it is, I know her name. I can't think of her name off the top of my head. I know the lady that lives here, that has the mother and father that, over here. And I've been there several times, you know, when it rains, and I've seen that creek come across that property, and it's come through her backyard and up on her porch. And at one time, I know that that creek runs, is it in that Milgrove Road or whatever? Runs to Milgrove Road, and there was a bunch of trash in that. And that's a large creek. It's funny, you can't see it. It's a pretty big, pretty big creek that runs all the way through there, and they had trash in it. And I don't know if the town or DOT came and removed some of that trash. It kind of alleviated that problem somewhat, but I've seen that. And that's a really bad area. And the next thing that worries me is that house right there. And the next thing that worries me is that house right there is going to get flooded. And if I'm not mistaken, has that house been flooded before?
That house has been flooded several times. They raised the house thinking that would correct the problem, but it's still flooded.
And also, I've spoken to residents. I think the lady that, and you know, you guys can't see it. I think this lady that lives back here, I think she has a fence that goes around. She had called me also, and that flooding goes all the way up through her yard and all the way up in there. So there's a problem there.
We do have a problem, David, and as a contingency plan, if we start with this parcel by itself, that will probably help a 10-year storm, 25-year storm, and 50-year storm. But if we get the 100-year storm, and it, you know, it rarely happens, but if we see that what we've done is not helping 100%, then we could go further along, as the consultant suggested, along the channel and have that bench that they're talking about. So we do have a contingency plan for that.
And one last thing. Not too long ago, I know that, I think the power company did come through there and clean all that out, and they actually left a lot of debris in there when they cleaned out the... and it still didn't help. So anyway, I just wanted to put my two cents in what I knew and had seen and had pictures and had been there on several different occasions to see the flooding. I'm done.
Okay.
We're asking council for a vote tonight, if it's possible, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Sedik's needing a motion?
Excuse me. I have to recuse myself because I am in the third property over there. We've never been flooded, but I'd like to make a comment before you take your vote here. The house across the street from that also flooded, that's along the creek there. But the one next door to me has flooded probably about 10 times. And the lot that we're talking about working on now, what happened is, after they raised the house and it still flooded, they cleared the lot and buried everything that was available in the ground, the furnace and everything else. We were still in Union County then. We hadn't been taken into Indian Trail. Then somebody brought a house on wheels, and that was there for a couple of years. And that was trying to get that off there was a problem. And finally, the day before they were going to destroy it, the owner came and moved the house, because they were house movers, and they never dropped the house. We made sure that that didn't happen. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Morse.
Yeah, on that particular lot, you're talking about doing a retention pond?
Yes.
Does that also include a safety fence around the lot?
That is correct.
Is there any concern about mosquito issue for the neighbors there or anything? Is there anything to mitigate that?
Looking at the other five options, Jerry, we felt that, you know, if we get rid of the roadway and have to call the Saks, probably will have issues with the call the Saks, people hanging around there, trash, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that would be the best option. And this is typically done everywhere where you have very long channel that is flat. This item right here is the only mitigation for that. So we kind of looked at all that stuff, and we found out that would be the best option for us to start with, and hopefully it will be helping all the flooding and keep those three houses right there away from the flooding area.
Have you already spoken to the property owner about possibly purchasing this?
We have not done that yet. There is a process that we have to follow in order to get that property.
Total cost, you think?
Well, I did share with you the cost for the construction, $170,000, but we do not know the cost of the property itself yet. And if the price is negotiated and everything is accepted, that's well. If not, we have to go through the eminent domain process.
I understand at one time there was a value tax... Isn't it the tax value is around $20,000 for the lot?
That is correct. It was about $20,000, $25,000, not more than that.
Any other questions?
One other quick question, ma'am.
Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
Is that the lowest cost? Is that the...
Yes, I would say, David, Todd, I might need your help on that. I think it was the second...
Second lowest.
Second lowest.
We had one for about $150,000.
So you just don't think it's...
That was my update situation.
We were talking about .1 to .4 of a foot, which is, it's not going to help much the flooding problem that we have there. So pay a little bit more money and get almost a foot, David.
Any other questions?
So we're only voting for the, at this point in time, the 170?
Yes, sir. We're only voting for this option right now, not including the purchase of the property, the price.
Okay. Let the council, Ms. Howe's requested to be recused from this because she lives there. Anybody have an issue with that? No, let the record stand. Ms. Howe's recusing her vote from this. We need a motion. Mr. Cohen?
I make a motion to approve the construction, $170,000.
Ms. Cohen's made the motion to approve the construction cost. All in favor? That would be unanimous with Ms. Howe's vote being recused. That brings us to First Avenue Storm Drainage Project. Mr. Sedik.
Thank you, sir. After talking to the consultant, we do have the project is subdivided into three phases. We think that starting with the pond is the best option right now. If we start with the pond, we could retain all that water that's impacting about 20 houses during the flooding. And the construction cost for that pond, we have five lots. It's a very low area, swampy, and also it has a lot of vegetation in it. And also, if we go in there and start clearing and robbing, then we might need to fix that private roadway as we pull out, and also that will include fencing around it. So we're looking at a cost of $230,000, not including the cost of the purchase of the properties, but they have a value, Todd, if I'm not mistaken, about $2,500 apiece. But we don't think that a market value, market value for all five of them would be much higher, but we're going to have to go through the same process like the Beacon Hill, which is the eminent domain process.
Mr. Cohen?
And we're asking... Go ahead, Mr. Cohen. You have a question, sir?
Yeah, I do. If I'm not mistaken, we did a study on this, did we not?
Yes, sir. We did a study on that, and the project has been out there for about a year. And again, the streets are not owned by the town, but the residents pay stormwater fees, and we are ready right now to start the project.
Now, on this project, are we doing anything to the streets or just the pond?
This one right now, Mr. Cohen, just the pond.
Just the pond.
Yes, sir. And we found out, and as a matter of fact, Todd and I, we were out there today, that is the lowest area, and we believe that this is where we could retain the water, keep it away from the neighborhood, and discharge it at a lower rate. And when we're done with that, then we move to the second phase, and this is when we come to council for approval.
So this is just for Phase 1?
This is Phase 1, sir. Yes, sir.
Because they do have a tremendous problem in that area. I've been there many times, and something needs to be done. There is a problem, though, that they are private roads, so that's the biggest problem, I guess, we have. But, you know, we're not... Is there a chance that once we do this, that we'll, I guess we'll have a chance to see how much this affects or...
Absolutely, David. That's the intent of starting here. The other good thing about having the pond, the pond will keep water away during construction. So that roadway and the substrate under the roadway will be dry, and it makes the process much faster, and we don't have to deal with any water. If we don't contain it and we start with the roadway and the pipes, that we might have more issues during construction that will lead the project to be much higher than it is right now. And we took our consultant's recommendation on this one, too, and he does concur.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I say it's time to start spending some stormwater money for the residents of our town, which we didn't do for a long time, and it's time.
Mr. Cohen?
It's my recommendation.
Would you like to make the motion?
Well, I can unless somebody else wants to make the motion. I feel like I'm making them all. I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion to approve. All in favor? That would be unanimous. That moves us to the Ashcroft-Union Grove Drainage. Mr. Sedik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll go over this one quickly, too. About a year and a half ago, we presented to council four different options. And one option is to go in there behind the lots and shape up the channel, and that option will cost about $300,000. Second option is to pipe the channel in the back with two different pipes, and the pricing will vary from $355,000 to $410,000. The third option was to go, Michael, if we could show, I think the streets is Brook Forest, to route some of the stormwater through Brook Forest and then run it through the easement and then bring it back toward the pond area. That will require getting an encroachment from North Carolina DOT and also dealing with some sewer conflicts. And also, we're very... I'm pretty sure that North Carolina DOT will require us to pave the roadway. So the cost of that was about $292,000. And the last item is to go to Union Grove and raise one of their ponds about a foot to have more capacity. But we did a couple other items in addition to this study that we did and in addition to the design. We did a study at the lower part of Ashcroft, and we studied the floodplain area and the pond that was overflowing from the floodplain. And we found out that that pond was built in a floodplain area. So we paid about $15,000, and the consultant came back and said the pond needs to be dredged. And one of the things is that it's within a floodplain, not much we could do about that. So if we want to drain the pond good, we have to go way downstream within the floodplain and clean the entire floodplain, and that's a big task that will cost a lot of hundreds of thousands of dollars. In addition to that, we went to Union Grove, and we had a consultant to study their design just to make sure the ponds and the storm drainage system that they specified at Union Grove was correct. And we found out, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, that they did not have anything wrong with their storm drainage design, correct?
Yeah, yeah. The only thing we found that their 100-year retention was a little off, but they fixed that, and they went in there and changed some of their elevations and stuff. But it was just from the 100-year storm. It wasn't anything between 10 to 25 to 50, so...
So to finalize it, we're not getting too much water from Union Grove, only a small amount of water after the storm, and that's what we've seen behind the yards. Now, if I go back to option number one, I think we received some calls from the residents saying, "Well, you haven't done anything yet. We thought that one of the four alternatives to be done." So after we did the study at Union Grove, we found out that, you know, they're not contributing a lot of stormwater across the street and dumping it on Ashcroft. And the main thing also, we didn't want to go back there to the backyard, because the soil is so saturated. It has fences, it's very flat, we have, I think, a couple of swimming pools, we need to have an easement in the back, and if we get in there, in our opinion, it's going to make the problem much worse. So if we... And here, we're not asking council to approve any of the option yet. We just want to bring it back as a reminder and let you know where we're at. I think option number two that we're looking at would be probably the best option if we decide to go that route. So we just wanted to kind of remind you of the four options and let you see where we think in what route we're going to. You want to add anything, Todd, to my comments?
No.
So we've done everything we can, there's studies, design, and we're ready to move with an option. And I would recommend this second option right here because it keeps us away from the So it's an information item only, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I got so many questions. Two questions. How much is option two?
If piping, David?
Yeah.
If we pipe it with reinforced concrete pipe, $410,000. If we pipe it with a metal pipe, $355,000, approximately.
And I do remember the town doing a study and spent a lot of money on that study, if I'm not mistaken. How much did we spend on...
Now, the study that we did for the pond at the bottom, that was only $15,000. But the original study, Adam, do you have an idea about the original study for the four options? I'm pretty sure not less than $70,000, $80,000.
I was going to say, I thought it was closer to $100,000, but don't, I mean, don't...
So we've already spent $100,000 on the study?
Including the design, David.
And if it's not my... And, you know, I was on council then, and that's why I'm asking these questions, and you guys weren't, so I apologize for asking so many questions. But it was, to my knowledge, I thought the study said, they actually, did they recommend doing nothing? Or am I just...
No, David. I think staff at that time, when we presented before council, after we did the study at Union Grove and then the study down that followed it, I think the pond study followed it, the original study. And then when we looked at the shape of the channel, how flat it is, we recommended nothing. So no impact from Union Grove. The channel is very flat. The backyards are so saturated. If we go back there, we're going to have an issue, make it worse. So that's why we backed out of any of those options at that time, especially after we found out that Union Grove did not contribute to the problem.
Right. And...
And David, if I may add, also the consultant brought to our attention that that neighborhood is about 20-some years old. I wasn't here. But over the years, the debris from the backyards, the grass and all that stuff, sometimes what it does, it kind of make the backyard area and the channel flat over the years. So I think that part of that development was developed first, and it followed up, followed by other phases. So that's one item that could happen over the years, that, you know, a lot of debris in the back that kind of impacted the channel. But the biggest problem is if we get to the back, we have to get easements, and we will be causing a lot of damage more than helping the channel. So if we want to select an option, my staff's preference is stay away from the backyard and select one on the street that could help much better than getting in the backyard.
You know, I've been also over there on quite a few occasions and talked with homeowners. Also, part of the problem there is, too, is you're right, that was an older neighborhood, 20, 25 years old. And what's happened is, a lot of the people have built decks and pools and other things and didn't follow the, or there was no... And they do have an HOA, so the HOA didn't enforce the rules on where they should have built that thing. So a lot of the things that they've built obstruct that channel.
Correct.
And the dirt has pushed down into that. And, you know, I hate to say it, but part of the problem is their HOA didn't follow through with their keeping that problem. But on top of that, the problem is they have a problem, you know? Whether they did or they didn't, you still want to help these people. And my suggestion would be to, you know, prioritize these, and I think both the ones we've spoken about tonight, probably the priority on one and two that we've already done is probably they're worse than three, which is being the Ashcroft. But I think we ought to continue the discussion, and I know that they're wanting something to happen. And I know that they're, they're, they're wanting something to happen. That's a lot of money. So maybe somehow we can sit down with the community or something and, uh, and work together. I don't, I don't know that the, uh, if, if we've ever done this before. But could, you know, maybe the HOA could, could raise, I hate to say this, maybe raise their HOA dues, you know, a certain amount to help pay for, you know, along with the town to fix it. And I don't know if that's an option or not, but it's just a thought, so.
Well, um, it sounds like, you know, the residents are causing part of the problem with building in the, what I call a floodplain, but the, the area to, to mitigate all the, the additional water. Would it not make sense for the, before we did anything, have the HOA communicate to those residents, hey, this is, has to change if we're going to fix the problem long-term? It sounds like we'll be just going in there and putting a Band-Aid, you know, over something where if you've got decks and pools and the whatnot in the way, maybe once you clean that up and then, you know, evaluate it at that point, then I would be in, in favor of putting money towards it. But, uh, you know, you, you want to help people that do help themselves as well.
I agree, council member. I think we, we could meet with, with the neighborhood representatives and we, we will discuss it with them and get back with council if needed.
Any other questions? Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is the Sardish Road-Unionville-Indian Trail Roundabout Intersection Shutdown. Mr. Sedik.
Yes, sir. This is a quick item. We've, we've shared with council before that there was an option to do small bypasses around the roundabout during construction. We talked to DOT. Their preference is the shutdown. And in order to meet the schedule, uh, I think the best option would be yes, to go ahead and shut it down, get the project done and have it ready before school opens. Todd, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, the, the other problem is if you don't do the shutdown, you try to divert traffic and everything else. You're, uh, you're basically, we're going to be adding a significant cost to the project right now. And it's right now already, uh, close to going over budget in the design phase. So, um, just keep that in mind. There will be more cost involved in the town if we move forward, not the recommendation of the state, which is to shut it down and get the project done as quick as possible.
Since we're having a lot of traffic congestion in town with too many projects, we just wanted to let you know if we shut it down, it's going to cause some, some traffic backups and a lot of detours.
Okay.
How long will it be shut down? Three months?
That would be the entire off-school season, about three months, I would say, Todd, minimum of three months.
Correct. The way, the way that project is working right now, if we, even if we had to do it in two phases and do some work, um, off the roadway, either way, you shut it down for two summers. I mean, worst-case scenario, we do it one summer, get some utility work done, next summer, shut it down completely and do it the following summer. So, I mean, we could do work, not shut it down this summer, get through there, and then the following summer, shut it down. So either way, it's just one summer. But the project could last two years, is what I'm getting at.
I mean, the risk will be, if I may, the risk will be here is that delay of two weeks, three weeks. But you will get it done in one season.
Good, David.
I personally think we need to do the one season, in my opinion. Let's go ahead and get it over with. I guess the, the question I would have, are there, do we anticipate or do we know of any other? Yes, the, we've got a lot going on, but do we know of any other impending or pending road closures during this time? Which would be during the summer hours, right? The, uh, between whenever the school gets out.
Usually during, during the shutdown, and if it's, if it's, uh, dry weather and summertime, we, sometimes they pull about 10 hours a day. The biggest risk on this project is that we do have two sewer force mains. One of them is water. One of them is sewer. And, uh, these are the uncertainties. They're underground, so we, we don't know. You know, we kind of plan for them, but we might run into anything. And they're sewer force main. They're not like a gravity line. Sometimes you have to create something called bypass in order, and then, and, and I think the state, they wanted them to be relocated outside of the route of way, correct?
Just the water main.
Just the water main. So, uh, uh, I mean, there, there is a risk of delay during the seasons, but it could happen in two seasons.
David?
Just a, and I apologize, Todd, if you said, if you answered this, there was just a minute there where I, I may, may not have heard what you said. But was there, was there an option, wasn't there an option at one time to go through the church and make a road through there? And have we?
Yes, David. As a matter of fact, I presented that option. We call them bypasses. One of them will be through the school parking lot and the other one through the church. But we found out that will also conflict with the relocation of the overhead utilities. And that will also require more real estate acquisition that will lengthen the process and eat up some of the construction, uh, time. So that's another judgment we have to make, that, you know, we, we could take the risk, shut it down, get everything done, or do the bypasses. And like Todd mentioned, there will be cost to do the bypasses. We have to prepare the road, put the asphalt, and all that has come out after we're done. So you have to do it on two corners. And one bypass should go through the school. So it'll be done on two, two corners. One of them is the church and the other one, I think it's the daycare, correct?
So that's not an option anymore?
Not, not anymore, David.
And always an option, but, um, not an option. But, um, you know, I know they've built quite a few roundabouts in the area the last couple of years. Built several near me. I'm assuming this is a pretty big roundabout and probably a bigger project than their smaller roundabouts.
The utility complex is the problem with this project. I mean, these other projects statewide, they didn't have to deal with it. They could go in there and build a road and didn't have to move water mains here and there. This, this intersection is just loaded with utilities and that's the problem.
And the, and the one, one last thing, one last comment is on this, on this particular, uh, project, I think you have to think about too. I, I know they're working on 74 as a super street. And they're probably going to get real busy on, on 74 as a super street. And of course, that, that kind of runs into it going the other direction. And you certainly don't want to have construction on the super street, which is probably going to be done by the end of the year. Is it an option to, to, I mean, I, I go through that intersection every day. It, would it be an option to maybe postpone this? Because we're talking about this, this summer or?
Well, that's what I was talking about with the utility work. We could do the utility work and keep the road open. So we could start the project, do the utility work, keep the road open this summer, and then next summer, shut it down and actually do the road work. And then both those projects would be done, the bypass on one end and the super street on down the other end. So I think that's your best, your best option, but, you know.
Well, you know, as long as you can keep the road open, I think that's, that's, that's a, you know, a good thing. I mean.
So there's no option of, of, well, you would only be able to keep one, you wouldn't be able to keep Union Trail-Unionville open. But you could still use, is there an option to use the, the school roads and then?
The neighborhood. There is a neighborhood there that you could go through. David, to, to answer your question, the, the best option is to, for the town, to do the utilities this season and keep the road open and then come back and do the, uh, do the rest, the surface part of the roundabout. The only thing is that there will be cost and mobilization and all that to get the contractor back. It'll be traffic control, cost, mobilization, bringing the equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the safest option. We could take the risk and do it this year, but we have a lot of projects. We have the Connector, Independence Boulevard. This one is in the middle, all the service roads. So we're going to be receiving a lot of heat from our residents. So if, if you feel that we need to go that route by splitting the utilities from the surface part, we will communicate to North Carolina DOT and move forward with that.
Yeah, the only, the two options that I see is either postpone it until next year, once the bypass is completed and the super street, or do it in two phases. I don't think it makes sense to do it this year with the risk involved.
Right. Uh, if we put off the whole project, utilities and the surface part, that's going to add about 10 to 15% to the cost. It's just time value of money. If, if we want to do it, council member, the best thing to do is do utilities, get them out of the way. We will find the uncertainties if we have any issues, rocks, whatever. And then next season comes in, we'll do just the surface part and that's the easy part.
Well, I'd say you're the expert on it. I'm not a, um, a traffic engineer or a road engineer. So I, I'm going to take your, it sounds, sounds best for me. I don't know about you guys, but that, that's the way I'd do it.
Okay, so we will communicate to North Carolina DOT that we're choosing to do the utilities, overhead, everything. Next season, we'll come in and do the surface part. Okay, Todd.
Okay. That brings us to the town NC DOT projects. Mr. Sedik?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did receive a copy of North Carolina DOT's, uh, comments on all the projects. And I did provide copy to council. I am ready to respond back with, with what we think we should do on each project. I just wanted council to know that we're ready to respond back. And I'm not asking anything, anything from council right now. The ball is in our court right now to respond back on all these projects and advise DOT which way we're planning to move with. So that's the only item I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to new business. Item A, Family Fun Day at Crooked Creek Park. Mr. Tryon, welcome.
I get the lights. Good evening, council and mayor. We're going to have a quick discussion on Family Fun Day. We're quickly approaching our event season. Our first event of 2018 is the Easter Egg Count, which will be March 24th, across the street at Chestnut Square Park. But as you see in front of you, there's some pictures from last year's Family Fun Day. Last year, we held it on Indian Trail Road in front of the old CAC facility. We shut the road down pretty much from Matthews Indian Trail Road to the pharmacy. The road consisted of really 25 to 30 vendors. And then we also brought in rides, inflatables, food trucks, games, music, bands, a variety of activities. There was a lot of discussion last year, bring that to the park. But we were kind of very late in the process of planning. So the plan this year is to move it to Crooked Creek Park. So if we go to the next slide, we will see a budget that we have come up with so far for the event. The only main difference between last year's budget and this year's budget is we have taken some consideration from discussion last year with council and added fireworks. So that is totally up to your decision if you would like to move forward with fireworks. But we have a broken-out budget for the event. 75% of the budget consists of fireworks and the rides. The goal that we try to provide for this event is everything is free for the ride. So if you go to other festivals, such as Matthews Alive, you pay to go to the rides. So your kids or your, your family or friends have to actually get bracelets or tickets to pay for the rides, whereas we provide that for free, which makes the, the cost for us a little expensive. But we think it's a very, you know, fun event for the family and everyone can go out and have a good time for free. So really, the other thing I want to post out in here is so far, we've already gotten one sponsorship that's finalized with Publix. We have another sponsorship that we have kind of almost finalized. We met with them last week and they would do another 2,500 dollars. And then just to give you some information on last year for revenue for the event from all the vendors, we brought in 2,400 dollars for revenue. So kind of with the total in front of you, take in mind that we will have about 7,500 dollars at least of revenue coming back in based off of sponsorship and also the revenue from the vendors. So any other questions or comments based on this budget? We would love to get this approved and move forward unless you want to make adjustments to it with either the fireworks or changing up the rides or anything like that.
Questions?
I'm just curious. 8,500 dollars for fireworks. I love the idea. How much is, I mean, I haven't, I mean, is that, is that a pretty good show?
We've met with four different fireworks companies. We kind of talked the, the one that we liked the most down, that he was really asking us for 10,000 dollars. We kind of told him, hey, this is our first time doing fireworks. We would love to build a relationship and have this be an annual activity at the event. He's right outside of South Carolina, so outside of Columbia, a couple hours away. And he said he could do it for 8,500. It would be a 14-minute show. The way all the fireworks do is it's really a, a time limit. So you can go as, as little as 11 minutes from what we were saying. And that would be about 5,000 dollars to 6,000 dollars. Or I think the longest that we were quoted was 20 minutes. And then that gets up to that 12 to 15,000 dollars.
Did you say 14 minutes?
Our, this one would be 14 minutes.
14 minutes. I, I, that's pretty good. I'm, I think that's, I think that's, that'd be, be a lot of fun for, for Indian Trail, uh, folks to come and watch a fireworks show, have a family fun day and, and, uh, you know, and not have to go, you know, to Monroe or, or somewhere else. Because they've, they've always done it, you know, something similar, Matthews or wherever. I, I, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Yeah, the idea would be we would change the time of the event. So last year, the event was from 11 to 7. We would change it to start later in the afternoon. I believe it's scheduled right now to start at 2:00. Fireworks would be at 8:30. So people could come either all day or come towards the afternoon, stay for dinner, music, and then grab a seat and enjoy the fireworks.
What date is it? I'm, I'm not looking at.
It is Saturday, June 3rd. Sorry.
Saturday, June the 3rd?
Yes.
Any other questions? I'm assuming you need a vote on this?
Yes.
Council? You may need a motion?
I don't want to make all the motions. Somebody make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion to approve the Family Fun Day budget. All in favor? Opposed? Let the record stand. All were in favor. Mr. Morse opposing. Motion passes. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Good job. Item B, Councilmember Kiesler's resignation. Mr. Cohen?
Just make this short and sweet. I think everyone knows. We had a resignation this week. Councilman Monty Kiesler resigned, excuse me, last week. And, uh, you know, I think Monty did a lot of good things for, um, as a councilperson. I enjoyed seeing things that he put on Facebook and informing the town residents of what was happening in town, the garbage pickup and the, everything else that he did. But, uh, anyway, I, I'd just like to, uh, accept, you know, have the council vote to accept his resignation. So I make a motion to accept his resignation.
Mr. Cohen's made a motion to accept the resignation. All in favor? That would be unanimous. That brings us to discussion items. Open council seat. Mr. Cohen? Oh, it's that Mr. Morse that put that on there?
I think that.
Mr. Morse, okay. Sorry, my, my apology.
Well, it only took two and a half months and here we are, one council person down. And as far as I'm concerned, I think that we should work at filling this council seat as quickly as possible. I've received some emails and, and phone calls from interested folks that, that want to serve on council. And, um, and, and there, we have some, we actually have some great candidates. There's folks that have talked about people that have run. And I know that Ms. Falkenberry, Mr., Mr. Cross, Mr. Bear, Mr. McIntyre, they put in a lot of hard work and tried to get elected. And it's, um, you know, and unfortunately, there's always just a couple of successful candidates and everyone else is somewhat licking their wounds and, you know. So, um, you know, I, I kind of looked at folks that ran and, and other folks as well, just who would be the best person for this job. But I, I feel like that, as some of the folks did suggest, that we should look at the, the candidates in the last election, a serious look. And I think that we have some really good candidates. And, um, I know that. And I think that we have some really good candidates, and, um, I know that I have somebody in mind that, that I would like to bring on council, and I'm hoping that tonight, maybe we can, we can do that.
Mr. Cohen?
I, I just have, I, I agree with Jerry's sentiment a hundred percent. We, we do have, uh, some good candidates and, um, that ran for the council seat. Um, I, I, I would, I would like for this, you know, I, I've been here for, uh, for the most years, and, uh, this is the fourth time I've seen this happen. And, uh, i- it's hard. It's hard every time it happens. It's tough. And, and I can, I can go back and think of the situations of, of where I was when I found out, uh, David Waddell resigned. Uh, I, I, I found out, you know, the, Amy and Mark, uh, many times, I, I had no clue what was happening, and, uh, it does put a burden on the council. It, it's something that, that we dislike as much as the residents dislike. I dislike this more than, more than you know. I'm, I'm gonna reach out to the town. I, I heard from a few people and got a few emails on people that, that they would like to see. And, uh, the, you know, I, the person I, I would like to see come on council is, is a person that, a free thinker, somebody that's gonna w- work with, with the council. But I think the lesson to be learned, uh, in all this is sometimes w- we get on separate sides. Some, sometimes we have people that, when we run against each other especially, uh, we, we run against each other, we, uh, disagree with how our town should be run. Uh, one of the things, I think, in our last, uh, election is, we had council people that thought we should, uh, you know, look for a new town manager. One of the things, I think, we have a great town manager. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a, uh, or try to find a person that has a like idea that, that I think, because we have a great town manager, that wants to keep our town manager. Uh, and I could go on and on against the instances of how some people feel. Uh, w- one other one w- was a, a garbage contract, and we just disagreed on it, period. I'm not gonna say anything else on it. I disagreed. I wanted to save the town a million dollars, and, and some people thought it was service, and some people didn't. So, I, I look at things differently, uh, from everybody else. But the lesson I think we should learn on all this is, is I reached out to several candidates, and I would consider those candidates, the other side, uh, the people that I ran against when the elec-, during the election, uh, or, or when I say we, I actually didn't run in the election, but who I supported in the election, uh, reached out because I wanted to talk to all of them. Uh, and I still wanna talk to all of them, and I think it's time that the town, we got a brand-new town hall. Whether you're a Republican, whether you're a Democrat, whether you're a Libertarian, whether you're an Independent, I don't care. I really don't. And, and I made a statement. Many times, people ask me, I, I don't, I don't like any of them, to be honest with you. I just, it's just, I, I don't mean that in a bad way, it's, I just, I just think it's the people that should make the decisions and not, not a party. It shouldn't be a, a, a party-affiliated, and it's not. It is not a party-affiliated election, has nothing to do with, with a party. Uh, and, and i- it, for the people who don't, or for the people who, who are not chosen tonight, come to us, let's sit down, because we got another election coming up in another year and nine months. And, let's talk. Let me know your ideas. Let, let us know your ideas. Let everybody know your ideas, because if we don't know how, exactly where you're, where you're coming from, or sit down, then how can we ever support you? It's kinda funny, I heard a story, and I'm gonna shut up in just a second. I talked to a, a, my neigh-, my neighbor lives across the street, one of the most admire the man, uh, m- more than, than you, you could know. I haven't known him that long, but, uh, he, he's a Jehovah's Witness, and he goes out every day knocking on doors, and I admire him for it. I, I, I think it's, it's one of the bravest things that a man can do, and I think he has a special place in heaven someday. I tell him that all the time. But he told me a, a story today about Noah's ark, standing out at the, at the mailbox, and, you know, he said, it took Noah fifty years to build, uh, an ark. And, uh, he said, nobody believed him. Nope, nobody believed Noah on, on what he, what was gonna happen. You know, he kept saying, it's gonna, it's gonna rain, I'm telling you, we're gonna have this, this tremendous storm. But as soon as the storm started, everybody started knocking on his door and saying, let me in, let me in. And, and I think, it was so odd, I, I said, Bobby, I, 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 I think that has a lot to do with, with, with what we're gonna talk about at the meeting tonight. Let's don't wait till the, till it's time to let me in. Let's talk now. We got another election coming up in a year and a half, a year and nine months? Let's talk now. Let's Republicans talk now. Let's Democrats talk now. Let's independents talk now. Let's all of us talk. Sit down, figure out our ideas, what we wanna do, and how just to make the town better. I don't care whether you're a Democrat, I promise you, I don't care whether you're a Republican, I don't care what you are. You know? Let's sit down and talk as Indian Trail residents on how we can make this town better. And, uh, I'm reaching out to you one more time. I'm reaching out to, to everybody here. Let's talk. Let's come to the table, and let's talk, and let's make the town better. Uh, one of the things that I, I, as you see, is all, look at all the projects that we're, we're, we're working on right now. There's a lot of stuff going on in this town. This town's growing, it's getting, uh, the, the roads, the, the, e- everything is just going crazy. And, you know, at least once a week, I get somebody calling me in the morning and, and just raising cane about the traffic, you know? And I don't blame them, you know? I'm, you know, my wife calls me a lot, once a week, raising cane about the traffic. So, you know, and I, you know, it's true. It, it's true, and, you know, she, she goes the opposite way to go to work that way, so she can get there faster, and that don't make sense to me either, but, but, you know, it's, it's the best way and the quickest way to get there, to avoid some traffic. So, let's all sit down and let's, let's talk together, uh, and, and how we can make the town better and not a party better, or a Republican Party, or the Democratic Party, or any party better. Let's make the town better. And I really mean that, and, uh, that, that's, that's my comment. Anybody?
Anyone else? Jerry, it's your-
Well, does, does anybody wanna make a motion to, to, uh-
For a process or a nomination? Jerry, you put this on-
Nominate somebody?
I, I, I am prepared to, to, uh, to nominate a person. This gentleman is, um, he's very intelligent, he's highly articulate. I ran with him. Um, I knocked on doors and shared his campaign literature with the residents. I got to listen to him for three months, and talk about his platform and his vision for Indian Trail, and, and it, and it really aligned with mine, and, and then I found out, you know, later on, what party he was in, but it didn't matter, 'cause I was talking to the person, and, and I really respect this individual, and, um, and that's Marcus McIntyre. And I, I think he would be a, a wonderful addition to our council, and I think he'd do a great job for the residents in our town, and I'd like to nominate him to be the next council person, to fill that seat. So, I need to make a motion, and-
Mr. Morse has made the nomination for Marcus McIntyre. Is there any discussion? Any other nominations? Or, Mr. Morse, you can make your motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marcus McIntyre to town council effective immediately.
Mr. Morse has made a motion to nominate Marcus McIntyre to replace, uh, Mr. Kiesler's seat for the remainder of his term. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Mr. McIntyre? Um, do you have any objection to this?
Sir, I accept.
You accept?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm, he said effective immediately. I'm assuming that the, uh, town clerk is prepared, or do you need a few minutes?
If you'll give me just a moment.
Okay, can we have a, um, how much time do you need?
Three, five minutes. Three to five.
Oh, I thought you said thirty-five minutes. I'm gonna call for a three-minute recess while she prepares any documents, at which time, Mr. McIntyre will take his oath of office. I can return to the council seats and residents to, um, their seats. Thank you. Okay. At this time, excuse me, I'll call this meeting back to order. Karen, do we need to suspend the rules to add this?
Um, no. You did, go ahead. If somebody can make a motion to go ahead with this wearing in, it's fine.
Okay, can we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion made.
Ms. House made a motion to suspend the rules, to add the item of administering the oath of office for council. All in favor? That would be unanimous. That would be under item, I guess, just, item twelve B.
Twelve B, yeah.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Would you mind giving a hand?
Sure.
Mr. McIntyre? If you would put your left hand on the microphone, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Marcus J. McIntyre-
I, Marcus J. McIntyre-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and maintain-
That I will support and maintain-
The Constitution and laws of the United States-
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws-
And-
Of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith-
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge-
And that I will faithfully discharge-
The duties of my office-
The duties of my office.
Of councilmember of the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina-
Of councilmember of the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
May I be the first to officially welcome Councilman Marcus McIntyre to the town of Indian Trail? Okay. That brings us to the manager's report. Uh, Mr. Sadek, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. In addition to the detailed manager's report that we, uh, uh, provide bi-weekly, uh, and it's posted on the website right now, I'd just like to add a couple of, a couple of items. The first one is, we rescheduled, uh, the first budget retreat session from the third of March to the tenth of March. Uh, that will help us a little bit refine, uh, our numbers. And the second item is, we did, we did receive a few calls in regard to, uh, trash along, uh, several streets in town, and Adam submitted a list to North Carolina DOT that has six major roadways within Indian Trail. So, uh, that's one area of making North Carolina DOT aware of the trash problem, and in addition to that, we will be coming next meeting before council with a small contract. Uh, we do have some savings from the solid waste contract, and we would like to come in and say if we could use some of that money to go out there and pick up some of the trash that we have along our town streets, so that will be shared with council next meeting. These are the only two items that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to council comments.
Would Mr. McIntyre like to speak first, since he's sitting, or last?
I, I would prefer to speak last, if possible.
Perfect.
Hold on, let me blink him out. Mr. Cohen?
Welcome, Marcus.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Uh, Marcus, I met a long time ago, and Marcus probably told the story a number of times where you don't need to hear it again, but, um, met him campaigning, and, uh, he, he was a tough guy to talk to, uh, but, uh, I respect him immensely. Um, I, I hope everyone saw tonight that there is a lot of stuff going on in town. Uh, a whole lot of stuff, and if you don't know what to, the, um, the council is, is doing more than, not, not to brag on the council, but, uh, this council has done more, is doing more than I've seen in years. We've never done this in the past, but we go to and attend every board meeting, uh, that there is. That, that has never been done in the past. Uh, sometimes two council people, uh, attend board meetings, and, uh, i- it's a, it's, it's a great way to get to know what's going on, get to know the people in the boards, and, uh, I'm, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm s- very proud. I'm, I'm very proud to work with you. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I think the, the hard work is gonna show in the long run, and, uh, we've gotta, like I said, we just gotta work together, keep working together. Uh, I'd like to always thank the staff, and, uh, as I told you, Patrick, you need to take some time off. Uh, you work, you, you, you're, you're going a hundred and fifty miles an hour, and, uh, and it's all by choice. He, he's, he, it's all by choice, uh, that he, that he's doing this, but, uh, you, you don't, you need to take a little time off, because you do a wonderful job, and the relationship that you have with, with, uh, DOT and the roads people, and, uh, I just wish all of you, a- and I, he's the kinda guy that if there's anybody in this room that wants to come down and talk to the town manager, he will talk to you. Come down, sit down, sit in his office, and, uh, I, I, I don't mean to, you're making your, but I, I feel like that's what you do. And I think that's what he does best, is we have a town manager that will, that will talk to you, uh, he will let you know what's going on in town, and, uh, he genuinely cares about the town. So, thank you for coming tonight, and, uh, congratulations again, Marcus.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Alvarez?
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you to the town staff. Marcus?
Thank you.
Welcome. You are a most honorable person. It's an honor to sit next to you. There's still a lot of violence everywhere you turn, school shootings, and just yesterday, a whole new level of violence live on Facebook that made international news right here in Union County. Um, Mr. Cohen's right, we need to all work together. That's the only way we can beat it and, um, move forward. Mr. Tryon, thanks for making Family Fun Day great, and, um, thanks to Chase and the sheriff's office. And, uh, Mr. Sadek? I owe you an apology, um, for an argument we had, and I'm sorry.
I do accept. Thank you very much.
And, uh, council, great job. God bless everyone. Be safe and be tolerable. Thank you.
Mr. Head?
Thanks, everyone, for coming. I, I agree with David, you know, uh, and, you know, I'm sitting here remembering, um, the last time we, uh, or not we, but the, the council that was, um, um, sitting had to do this, and there was a, a, a lot different atmosphere tonight than there, than there was the last time. And I think that kinda shows how far we've come in a, in a short period of time, and so I'm like David, um, you know, I'd like to, to reach out to, to everyone, and, and let's, just, I think we all want to do the same thing. We all, all want to see Indian Trail grow and, and, and be able to take the role that, that we know that it can. And it's not gonna take five of us, it's not gonna take ten of us, it's gonna take all of us. So I do, I do reach out to, to everyone, and let's say, you know, um, let's remember this moment, and let, let's let this moment be the beginning of something rather than, than the end of something. And as always, staff, um, having the, having, um, a unique situation of being re-, one of the retirees, I'm able to spend a lot of time with the staff and with Patrick and, and a lot of people in this room, and, and, uh, I really appreciate, um- And I really appreciate what y'all have done to help me bring me on board. And I'm just looking for a great year this year. We've got a full council, one that will work together. And again, we need everyone's help. Be safe going home. Thanks.
Ms. Howe?
I figured you had to get to me eventually. Again, thanks to everyone that's coming, that's here tonight. And it was nice to have, it's nice to have you aboard. It really is. I think you're a fine gentleman and I'm proud of the decision that the council made.
Thank you.
As far as cleanup days and so forth, the gentleman, I'm sorry, sir, I don't remember your name. Mr. Klingon? Okay. Klingon, not a Klingon.
Oh, no.
Have to watch that. I told my husband, we were riding around town, you can always tell when the economy's in a big upswing because there's garbage everywhere. And when we went into that bit of a depression, the roads were pretty clean. And I remember specifically telling him that. I know the Rotary has cleanup days and, or they have adopt a highway, and I think somebody's going to get some numbers of where we can call for that. I know on Idlewild Road, right before you get into Chris Mark, it looks like two cans of garbage have just been dumped there.
Exactly right.
And, you know, I'm really fussy about that. So, my husband says I never shut up when I get in the car. Look at this, look at that. So, I can understand where you're coming from. The stormwater in my neighborhood was approved and I really appreciate that. And it's been a 15-year trip for me on this. That's how I got involved in politics here because the town said that if they helped me, they would have to help everybody else that had a water problem. And it's, you know, that just didn't sit well at all. It took a time, but we got certain things done and this will be nice. I just hope we have some mosquito control. I'm close enough where I'd go down and whatever you have to have done, I'll do it to get rid of those mosquitoes. The meeting went well. I wish we had had more people here, but, you know, as time goes on, we can achieve that. There were a lot of good candidates, as they said, and I think we picked the best right now under the circumstances. And he's ready to go to work. And if he doesn't know it, we'll remind him. And other than that, have a safe drive home. Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
We got a lot done tonight. I guess I'd like to talk a little bit about the Family Fun Day and just give you a little reason why I voted against that. And it was, I believe in spending money on needs, not necessarily wants, because I want a fireworks show. But when on the way over here, I realized there was an intersection that needed a light just to illuminate it because it was a lot, it was dark. So, my mind goes there and says, "Is there a better way to spend the money?" But Mr. David did give me permission to come and enjoy the fireworks when they do go off. But that was one of the reasons. And plus, I'd like to see a lot more of our business community participate in some of these events and sponsor them. But I just want to give you a little insight into how I was thinking. Again, I think we chose the best candidate and we had, we had great candidates really to decide on. Mr. Klingon, thank you for coming and speaking about the trash. We heard about it a couple of council meeting before. It's been on Facebook. I know I had met with Patrick and conveyed some of the residents' concerns about that. And, you know, quite frankly, I was like, "Well, why don't we just, you know, get a posse and get out there with some trash bags and start picking it up?" And he, unfortunately, he brought to my attention certain things that prevent that from happening, and that's litigation if somebody gets hurt and state roads that own that and we can't just go and walk on their property, even though we're doing a good thing. But when I brought that concern to our town manager, he didn't push back or anything. He welcomed that and now he's working with other people to try to find a solution. And our roads, they do look bad. So, hopefully, we're going to get some, a pretty city once again here. Council meeting's kind of boring right now compared to some of the last council meetings that used to go on with a few fireworks. And I like to thank Patrick and the staff because, and I hear this every week, every council meeting, and I never could really appreciate it until I realized I was tying up their Saturdays, their evenings, coming up here to try to be better educated on the topic at hand. And they've never have pushed back and said, "We don't have time for that." They've just been very accommodating and I appreciate it so much. And I think it makes us a better council as well. I'm glad to see some of the storm, this is where the needs, spending money on needs. I'm glad to see the stormwater funds be utilized now and help these neighborhoods out. I know Beacon Hills, it's been going on for 15 years. It's not the fault of the residents or the fault of previous town councils. It's just they're a victim of circumstance, but I'm glad to see that moving forward. And I hope we do more good things like that for the residents. And thank you all for coming out tonight. God bless you.
And Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. I'm going to make my comments brief, but I want to say thank you to the council for putting the trust in me and giving me the opportunity to serve the town. I've lived there for almost 11 years and I love the town. I think this is one of the best places that you can live. So, I appreciate that and thank you to all of you. For the last, I want to say, two and a half months, we have relative calm at, you know, the town hall with the town council meetings. And it's really good to see that, to see everybody trying to work together. I think the, one of the things you can look at at my appointment this evening is that we all come from different backgrounds and different beliefs, but that wasn't the deciding factor. It's that they felt that after speaking to me and, you know, spending time with me during the campaign that I was sincere in what I said, when I said that I would want to serve the town in, you know, any capacity that I could. They believed that and they entrusted me by nominating me tonight and, you know, approving that. So, thank you very much. To the employees and Patrick and staff and so forth of the town, thank you for all the work that you do. Because while we may sit at home, we may not necessarily see everything that you guys do, but thank you for that. We appreciate it and that, you know, that keeps our town running. Mayor, thank you very much for being willing to hold the Bible for me. I appreciate that for the swearing in. So, thank you. Oh, Mr. Morris, thank you.
I couldn't do both.
You could. I was told you could, but next time. But thank you, everybody. And to all of you who came tonight, thank you very much. I'm keeping that brief tonight because just want to be able to get through this easy and, you know, have a small conversation. But thank you to all of you for coming and get home safe. Thank you.
Okay. That being said, we need a motion to adjourn. Mr. McIntyre, would you do us the honor?
Close session.
Oh, close, they said there was no closed session. I haven't received notice.
We are going into closed session for a real estate, to discuss a real estate matter and then to converge with attorney on attorney-client privilege matter.
Thank you, what she said. I need a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Mr. Head's made the motion. All in favor? Okay.
Counsel, we need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Shirley, Marcus, we've only got 30 seconds, please.
So moved.
Mr. Head's made a motion to come out of closed session. All in favor? Unanimous. Marcus, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Right here.
That would be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Marcus.
Thank you, sir.